All right, let's call the meeting to order for Friday, July 24th. The Design Review Board Special Meeting. Ms. Teresa, are we in compliance with the Freedom of Information Act?
Yes, sir, we are.
Very good. Would you please do roll call?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Lippert?
President?
Thank you. Ms. Foss?
Here.
Mr. McAllister?
Here.
Ms. Remke?
Here.
Mr. Malaski?
Here.
Mr. Chairman?
Here.
Thank you.
And it looks like today we have a swearing-in ceremony for new board member, Ms. Annette Lippert, and a reappointment for Mr. McAllister. So I would like to introduce the Assistant Town Manager, Josh Gruber, to take over for the swearing-in ceremony.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, everyone. If Mr. McAllister and Ms. Lippert would please raise the right hands and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear.
that I am duly qualified
that I'm duly qualified.
according to the Constitution of this state
according to the Constitution of this state.
to exercise the duties of the office
to exercise the duties of the office.
to which I have been appointed
to which I've been appointed.
and that I will
and that I will.
to the best of my ability
to the best of my ability.
discharge the duties thereof
discharge the duties thereof.
and preserve, protect, and defend
and preserve, protect, and defend.
the Constitution of this state
the Constitution of this state.
and of the United States.
and of the United States.
so help me God.
so help me God.
Thank you both very much for your service. It is truly and greatly appreciated.
Thank you very much, and welcome back, David. I think you're up for another three years.
I think that's right.
And starting with this one, Annette, you're now a lifetime member, so there's no Just kidding. All right, so we will move on for the approval of the agenda. Does staff have any changes to the agenda?
No, sir, not at this time.
All right. And may I have a mo-- oh, just as a point, in the past in these meetings, we've had assigned motion makers, but we decided to free up the mics, so everyone is hereby welcome and qualified to make a motion. But when we go through all the discussions, you'll be called on in turn for your input, and then if we need a second round of input or reply, we will take care of that. So may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of June 26, 2020, as submitted.
We have a motion by Mr. McAllister to approve the agenda. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Foss. This was pretty much a tie, but we'll take that one. So, board members, if you have any changes to the agenda, state them when you're called upon by Teresa. Otherwise, vote yes or no to approve the agenda. So Teresa, would you please do roll?
Ms. Lippert?
Yeah.
Ms. Foss?
Yes.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Ms. Remke?
Yes.
Mr. Malaski?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. All right, so the agenda has been approved. Now we will move on to the meetings, minute meetings from June 26, 2020. I assume everyone's had a chance to look at them. So may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the June 26 meeting? And again, if you have any changes, you'll have a chance to bring that up during roll. So may I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the agenda of June 26 meeting.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Foss to approve the meeting minutes of June 26. Can I have a-- is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Malaski. So again, during roll call, vote yes or no. Ms. Teresa, will you please do roll call?
Yes, sir. Ms. Lippert?
Yeah.
Ms. Foss?
Yes.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Ms. Remke?
Yes.
Mr. Malaski?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. All right. Chris, were there any public comments this time?
No, sir, but just to be clear, public comments concerning the agenda items were to be submitted electronically via the town's open town hall portal. The portal closed at noon yesterday, and there were no comments of record. Citizens were also provided the option to sign up for public comment participation by phone during this meeting. The public comment period closed at noon yesterday, and there were no requests from citizens to participate by phone.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to old business. Turn it over to Chris.
Under old business, we have new development conceptual Palmetto Bay Lodges, which is DRB A minute while we catch up. There's a little bit of lag time. I don't have it. Okay, there we go. So the site is outlined in red here. Palmetto Bay Road is running diagonally. You can see at the bottom of your screen is a seepine circle. You'll notice Arrow does that sort of 90-degree S-turn there behind the parcel, and then running along the bottom of the parcel is Archer Road. Is it Archer? I think it's Archer Road. And Publix is immediately across Palmetto Bay from the site. The large roof of the large building you see that's white. Does everybody know where we are? If anybody--
Yes.
Okay. The intent of this project is to provide workforce housing dwelling units. The site is comprised of three tracts of land totaling 2.78 acres. The projects consist of 16 dwelling unit, two-story multifamily building, a clubhouse building with a grill area and activity lawn, associated parking, sidewalks, and drives. The placement of the building and activity lawn are primary in the existing clearing to minimize tree removal. Placement also utilizes the same area for the entry drive as the existing asphalt curb cut. The large lawn area is for active use with the design concept being-- excuse me, being it's everyone's yard spilling out of the clubhouse and grill area. The project was previously reviewed by the DPD, and the plans have been adjusted addressing site plan concerns, building colors, showing buffers and setbacks, refined building roof form, or natural planting layout, and a site analysis. An updated survey is in progress and will be included in the final submission. It has been determined that by SLI Environmental that the drainage ditches are not wetlands and therefore do not have associated buffers. This will be noted and reflected on the updated survey. So we're going to look at the site, look at some photos of the site first. This is looking into the site. You can see how that area is relatively clear of trees. Just the more site photos. I'm sorry, the lag time for some reason is-- well, we're going quicker now. Again, another look back towards the road there from your inside the site. And you're inside the site looking towards Captain Woody's there. And this is a survey. I'm sorry, it's Target Road. So Target Road is on your right with Palmetto Bay Road on the bottom. And here's the site analysis. So you can see that cluster of-- ah, there we are. My apologies, the lag time. You can see that cluster of pines that we were looking at in the photo here. And the ditch area that he was referencing, that SLI Environmental looked at, is up here on this side of the site. This is the proposed site layout, site plan. And the proposed color board that was on display earlier this week. This is what the building will look like, the apartment complex. This is the clubhouse, the proposed clubhouse. And details of the fence at the front. Benson Gate, sorry. Staff recommends conceptual approval with the comment sheet attached-- with the suggestion that the comment sheet be attached to the notice of action as a condition of the approval.
All right, thank you, Chris. Is the-- oh, does anybody have any questions for-- well, I'm sorry, I'm getting used to the new order here. If you have any questions for Chris, you can do that when you're called upon during roll call. But is the applicant present? And if you would please identify yourself for the record?
This is the applicant-- sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, Greg.
I'm sorry, I just was-- this is the architect, and I think someone from the landscape architecture firm is here as well, for Brian, who was the applicant.
Okay, can we get a-- just for the record, please state your full name and your company.
This is Gray Stout, Architect with Housing Studio.
Okay, and who's from Whitmer Jones-Kiefer? Who's on the line?
It's Dan Kiefer, Whitmer Jones-Kiefer.
All right, hi, Dan, welcome. All right, would one of you like to-- or both of you, either one, we have 10-minute time. Would you like to further pile on to what Chris had said, or the floor is yours for any additional information?
Dan, if it's okay with you, I'll just address a couple of the comments that are attached to the proposed approval with conditions or comments. Number one, how is ADA access to the apartment building provided? I just wanted to reiterate, we discussed this last time, that the building, because of the location and the flood zone, is exempt from having an accessible ramp up to the breezeways. So the two sets of stairs that you see on the site plan, and then the elevations up to the apartments, will provide the entry and exit from the building.
Okay.
And then I just wanted to mention on the natural materials and colors, that we revised our color scheme, and we also concur with your suggestion to use weathered wood for the shingle, slate gray for the metal roof element. And I just wanted to clarify that we intend to use a gray mortar that matches the color of the brick as opposed to a white mortar. And we would update the color board for the final submittal as well as conforming to the size requirements.
Great. Dan, do you have anything to add?
Just on the walkway in the front shared lawn, the idea was to maximize that space for sort of that shared lawn view and look. And as we go from preliminary to final, we'll look at a couple options to do sort of streamline that or provide more direct access to the units. So we'll adjust that as we go from prelim to final.
Okay, sounds great. So Brian-- sorry, go ahead, sorry, Dan.
And as you, as Chris mentioned, we're updating the tree survey at final, and I think there was a little bit of study work, detail work to do on the fencing and gates as well.
Okay, and there was a question about the 28-inch pine on the-- not a question, but in staff comments about the 28-inch pine. Did you address that in these plans?
We didn't. It's right on the edge of the road, and we're going to take a closer look at it based on--
Okay.
the property and the new survey.
Okay, all right.
We'll take a look at it.
Okay, thank you. And-- okay, I think it's all great. So Brian didn't want to come back and see us?
He went on vacation.
He went on vacation? Oh, that must be nice. All right, so are you, Gray and Dan, is that all you have?
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, so we will begin with the discussion. Ms. Teresa will call on everybody in turn, and if you have any questions for Chris or the applicants, please state them at that time.
Ms. Foss?
Yes. Thank you to the architect and the landscape architect for addressing the issues that were in staff comments. I'm happy to hear that you're going to use the weathered wood shingle and the slate gray metal roof and the gray mortar. The pedestrian path is, in my opinion, not very organic, and I'm going to let Mr. McAllister add to that comment. What I find when I'm looking at this from the plan view is that it's not really allowing people to use that green space as they probably are going to want to. And I'm also concerned about the bike rack being right there in the middle. It looks like it's a good place to put it, but I'm going to guess that there's going to be a lot of bikes at this property. And I don't know if that's a big enough bike rack, or maybe that should move to the side or the back or something. And also, I'm not seeing how the vans that are going to drop the people off are going to turn around or get out of there. The other issue is, I'm guessing that people are going to be want to use, like, folding beach chairs or something out there on the lawn, and maybe there should be a space for storage for some of that stuff. Otherwise, it might just get left out there because they'll pick up a used chair off the beach and leave it there. I think that's all my comments. Yes, thank you.
Mr. McAllister?
Yeah, well, second, what Ms. Foss just said, I think you guys have done a great job. I think it's a great-looking conceptual submittal. As far as the sidewalks go, I get the intent behind what you guys are doing. I also understand staff's comment and concern. It's a little engineered feeling. But, you know, I also understand that you're maximizing that lawn space, and for that reason, it makes sense to me. So I'm not necessarily opposed to how it is, but, you know, there may be a little room for improvement, maybe if you even ease the edges, had a larger radius. That's just a suggestion. But I'm actually okay with how it is. I mean, you know, I think it makes sense. I understand the intent behind it. As far as the bike racks, again, I understand the reason for the location there. It may be a little cluttered looking just in the front of that, of the building. So I would support if you guys decided to maybe move it over to plan left, to the left side of the building, I would support, you know, maybe find a new location for that as well, just to reduce the clutter in front of the building. I think landscape looks great overall. If you guys could maybe pinch the lawn down a little bit, it might alleviate some of the pressure on that 28-inch pine that's in question. And I know you guys mentioned you're getting a new tree survey, and you're going to assess the health of the tree, but if you determine that it's healthy, I think, you know, maybe reducing the width of the lawn might get the street off the tree a little bit. The only other landscape comment I have was coming in on the entrance, there's a sidewalk that kind of gets offset a little bit from the pavement. I think there's probably an opportunity to plant something right there, just to give a little separation from the road. I didn't see it sodded or anything, so I think planting that would be appropriate. And that's really all I have. Other than that, I think it's a good-looking project.
Ms. Remke?
I like the colors that have been chosen. I think that's going to look very good. It's a little bit hard for me to see this site plan on-- now, can we go back to the site plan, please? Site plan? Yeah, there we go. It's a little bit hard for me to see on my computer screen, but we had talked at one time about traffic coming in and how they would enter, and then it looks like they need to turn around on the property to go out again, because I think I'm seeing speed bumps down here. Yeah, to your left, there isn't that a speed bump. Is that the road?
I'm not going to speak for the applicant, but I believe that's just a crosswalk.
Okay, but that is-- isn't that the road? Is that how they come into the property, and then once they get in, particularly if they have a bus, they have to turn around someplace to get out again?
Yes, ma'am, that's the drive-- that's the drive into the parking lot on the left.
Okay, and depending on how big the buses are, I just want to make sure that we've got the space to do that turnaround and go out again. Second thing, when we looked at this before, I think there was a security gate at the front. Is that gate still there, or was that removed? On Arrow Road?
That's still there.
Okay, all right. And then, is there a fence all around the property?
Ms. Remke, this is Chris with the town.
Yes.
To my knowledge, there is not, but that might be an applicant question. You might clarify if you're asking the applicant or the town.
Oh, I'm asking the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry. Is there a fence around the property?
Dan could speak to that. To my knowledge, there's not.
My only concern is, given it's a workforce project, there probably will be lots of children around there. So are they free just to wander in the woods? And also, particularly on the, what I'm going to call the north side, at least it's the north side of this drawing, where that ditch is, is there any danger for children getting in that ditch? Or do we need to put some kind of fence up there? I'm assuming it's an open ditch. Maybe I'm wrong on that. But that's my concern, is whether children might be able to access that, and there's water in there, and we know that kids can drown in very little amounts of water. So those are my comments. I'd like to see a fence around it if possible for safety and security. And we just need to make sure that there's ample room for parked cars and buses to turn around on the property so they can get out again.
Mr. Malaski?
Yeah, just to compliment you guys on the building and the clubhouse, I think it looks great, so that's exciting stuff. I agree with Mr. McAllister's comment. I guess as you enter the property there, there could-- a nice little opportunity for a little solder planning buffer there, just to separate the pedestrian walkway from the entry. I think that was a great suggestion. You know, again, I kind of liked how things were before, making it easy for the van to turn around, so it looks like the van would just have a three-point turn opportunity here, and I'm sure the driver would be fine with that, but just to make sure that that was adequately addressed. Same thing with the bike storage. I'm kind of envisioning this almost as a-- how like a college campus building would be, where you have a lot of students on bikes. So I understand the proximity of keeping it close to the main entrance, but perhaps like Mr. McAllister had suggested, shifting it off to the left somewhere there, so it's buffered by the clubhouse a little bit, so the views of the building and the grassy play area perhaps are not obstructed with bikes just, you know, potentially junking up the front elevation. Other than that, I think the project looks really good. Thank you.
Ms. Lippert?
I agree with all the comments that people have made. I think one of the nice features in particular is the clubhouse as being part of the project. I do have a couple of questions for the applicant. One of them is just by virtue of how the three properties, two legs of them connect to 278, but then as we kind of get into the plans, those sections are cut off. Will there not-- will there-- there will not be a connection to 278? Everything will be to Target Road?
This is Dan Kiefer. At this point, that's the plan. There is room for parking expansion on the western side, the side that are closer to our plan left, but as of now, they're not-- they're only connecting to Target Road.
Okay, because I think that's nice that it's staying off of the 278. That was one of my questions. For the architect, I had the question, and I maybe because the color board was, I think, the earlier iteration, where it was calling out the gutters and downspouts to be that dark bronze, with the metal now having the standing seam metal roof having gone to slate gray. Will the gutters and downspouts also be the slate gray?
You know, actually, we hadn't considered that, but I think that's a very good suggestion to match those, and I would say we would do that as part of our final submittal then.
Okay, that sounds good. And I realize this is a concept submission, but I did just want to mention a couple of items on the elevations that maybe want to just get studied a little bit more on the west elevation. In that gable, the little gable, the center brackets, while I understand sort of conceptually, I believe they're not actually supporting anything because the alabaster trim is back and plain with the gable. I may be reading that wrong. because the alabaster trim is back and plain with the gable. I may be reading that wrong. So they feel like an additive element and I guess, uh, the center too. So I guess I just recommend maybe reviewing those one more time. Um, and on the service yards, the shadows, there's a shadow throne that, I wasn't sure what it was implying it because it was showing sort of an open triangle, um, in the shadow. So I didn't know how to quite read that. Could the architect elaborate on that?
Yes. And which, which elevation was that, the, um?
It's on either one. It's, it's on this west, um, elevation.
So there's a two-foot overhang on the building and then that, that overhang fascia becomes the gabled end rake. So the wall playing beyond is actually two feet back. And then there's a, a beam that's flying across there that the brackets were supporting. So that beam is out away from the wall. And so what you're, you're seeing is the, the shadow effect that the gable will have because the wall is pushed back two feet from the front edge of the gable.
Sorry, I'm asking about the shadow at the service yard.
Oh, the shadow at the service yard?
It shows sort of an open triangle there with a, almost like a beam. Is, is the side of the service yard open with just one element going back? I was trying to understand that.
Okay, um, oh, I see what you're saying. So that, there's, there's two sets of condenser units that are elevated and screened with the horizontal boards. And I think that's a shadow line that's project, that's just a graphic to try to indicate that, because you're looking at this in elevation, that those two mechanical unit enclosures are projecting forward from the building about four feet. And so it's casting a shadow back against the building. And that's all that is.
Gotcha, okay. So it's probably just that it would really be a solid shadow versus just a beam.
That's right. It's just, it's not shaded.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
To be shaded. Sorry about that, yeah.
No, no worries. It's just sometimes those are the little things that, um, make one sort of say, what it, am I reading the drawing right on the side on the front elevation then?
Right, that's a very good question. Thank you.
On the southeast elevation in the paneled area, I, I was wondering if maybe you want to review the width of that brick pier. Maybe it wants to become a little bit wider at that condition. Um, it, I think it'll help make it feel like it's actually supporting what is being emphasized under the standing seam roof. And, because it's, it feels a bit narrow, so maybe just something to study.
I, I agree with that. Thank you.
But I think it's a, it's a nice project and I, I think everybody sort of in the area agrees that workforce housing is desperately needed because as, as a town, we struggle to get, uh, labor force who are willing to make the commute. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
All right, thank you. I think, uh, Annette just set a new standard for, uh, first-time comments. Very nice. Um, very insightful, so. Um, yeah, I, I think, uh, from the last meeting, um, the applicants responded well to the comments from before. Um, I'm just going to throw in my two cents on some of the other comments, because I think everybody covered everything pretty well. Um, I'm fine with the rectangular lawn, because I think it, it makes it more of a, of a, of like an open green, uh, where, you know, they could, if, if somebody said college campus, uh, referred to as a college campus, you know, so it's, it's like a big green area and go out and throw a frisbee or whatever, whatever they want to do out there. So I'm not too worried about trying to get organic with, uh, with the sidewalks in that area. Uh, I think, I think it's fine. The van, you know, the, the workforce van in and out was a good comment. Um, just ask, uh, Dan and Whitmer Jones Kiefer to make sure that little key bar at the end on the left side of the plan is sufficient for a, you know, a 12-passenger van or whatever size vehicle is going to pull in there to make sure that that does indeed work. Um, what else I have circled? I think overall, the architecture is very nice. I thought, uh, Annette brought up some really great points on the details. So, uh, with the applicant could look at those, uh, but overall, I think it's very good. Um, the staff comments were spot-on as usual, and I agree with all of them. And from the applicant's introduction, it's, it sounds like they are going to address all of those. But whoever chooses to make a motion, um, we will still need to repeat those staff comments. But instead of reading the, the multiple paragraphs, you can just say, uh, uh, conceptual approval with the comment sheet attached to the notice of action, uh, as a condition of approval, and then that'll cover all that. But, um, you know, I, I think overall, the project's great. Um, David seemed pretty much in step with all the, uh, all the landscape. And, uh, you know, and, and moving the vehicle gate was also good. That was part of our last discussion, so that there's room for cars that, you know, two or three cars to actually stack as, as they're coming in without being hanging out in Target Road. So, um, that's it for me. Does anyone, um, does anyone have any second round input? If you do, just raise your hand and, well, okay, John?
Yes, I just wanted to ask, uh, back to the pedestrian entrance that's coming in there, I guess, off of Target Road. This is probably a question more maybe for Chris and the town. Um, are there any, uh, plans to add any type of sidewalk or anything that you, that you're aware of along Target Road? I mean, assuming that there would be more bike traffic and potentially pedestrian traffic going to this site now, since it's, it's an empty lot currently, um, just to make it safe so you don't have bikes and, and adults or kids for that matter walking up and down Target Road, heading back to this housing project?
The quick answer to your question is, there's currently no plans to add sidewalks along Target Road at this time. Um, now, having said that, um, with increased pedestrian or bike traffic in an area, it will then become an issue. And in the future, there might be plans, again, with that added traffic, to add a path. But there are none at this time, and I'm, you know, I can't guarantee that that will happen.
So, thank, thanks for sharing that. So with that in mind, along the west side of Target Road, and, and maybe this isn't how things are done, but in anticipation of maybe any future, uh, bike path or pedestrian path along Target Road, does that affect at all the, uh, the grading plan and/or, or landscaping in those areas? Or we just kind of do it as, as submitted and then if down the road, whether it's one year or five years, it would just be revisited to accommodate a future bike or pedestrian path?
Yeah, I, I think that would be the course. Um, they've taken it all the way to their property line, so, um,
That's all they're responsible for.
In the, in the, in the unlikely event that sidewalks are added there, uh, I say you address that when that, if, and when that happens. I, I don't think the board would, should do anything to predict the future on that.
Okay, thank you.
A good comment, though. And, uh, Ms. Foss, you had your hand raised.
I forgot to ask the question. Um, we have the two accessible parking spaces, and I do remember the conversation in our last meeting about, um, the apartments not needing to have accessible entrances. But I think the architect, and I'm asking the architect, addressed that the clubhouse was going to be accessible, and that's why the parking was there. If you could address that, I'd appreciate it.
Uh, yes, of course. So there will be an accessible lift that will be tucked into the left side of the porch if you are facing the club from the accessible parking spaces. And it, if you notice how there's the, these large, uh, columns on the left and right side of the stair and then continuing, uh, there's another column on the far left side. So the lift will be tucked in behind that column. And so it's protected by the overhang and the roof of the porch. And the site plan will have to be, um, slightly adjusted to show the sidewalk going to that lift.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks for asking, yeah.
Okay, good comment. So, um, if, if, uh, so that'll be updated on the next, next round of, uh, site plan. All right, so anyone else? Second round comments? All right, so the floor is open if anyone would like to, uh, uh, hold on one second. Okay, uh, floor is open if anyone would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to, uh, conceptual approval of the Palme de Bay lodges DRB 001368-2020. Um, with this conceptual approval, we'd like the staff comment sheets and the, um, LMO requirements to be a part of the approval. The other conditions are weatherwood shingles will be used, slate gray metal roof will be used, gray mortar instead of white mortar. Take a look at the pedestrian path and study how it works for the pedestrians and how it goes to the lift and the coach or the clubhouse. Um, reconsider the bike rack location, the gutters and downspouts to match slate gray metal roof. Study the width of the brick piers. Make sure there's sufficient turnaround for any vans that are, um, bringing people in and out. And that's it. I covered everything.
Uh, let's add the landscape comment with, um, between the sidewalk and the edge of pavement.
I'll amend my motion that we want you to look at landscaping between the sidewalk at the entranceway to kind of increase that buildup there.
All right. And since this is recorded and, uh, Ms. Teresa takes better notes than I will, I'm not going to repeat the conditions of the motion just so that I don't mess it up, because I don't ride as fast as Dale used to. So, um, would anyone have any feedback or additions to the original motion? Sounded pretty good to me. Um, now, uh, this is Annette's first vote. Annette, you are under no pressure to, uh, you know, your vote is your vote. So if, uh, what we do at this time, if you have anything you would like added to the motion, you can request it to the motion maker. If not, we're voting on exactly what Ms. Foss said. Um, and you are able to vote yes or no based on that particular motion. So, so since, uh, since it doesn't look like anybody has anything to add, would anyone like to make a second on Ms. Foss's motion?
I'll second.
We have a second by Mr. McAllister. So, Ms. Teresa, would you like to take a roll? And again, you're voting, uh, yes or no?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Lippert?
Yes.
Ms. Foss?
Yes.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Ms. Remke?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. So motion passes unanimously. Uh, look forward to seeing this at the next round. So thank you, Gray and Dan, and, um, you do not need to stay around unless you guys got anything else on the agenda, but I don't believe you do. So, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, so now we're moving on to, if I didn't get my pages mixed up, moving on to new business with, uh, alteration edition for Jane Bistro, DRB 001199-2020. Chris, would you like to take it?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Um, the applicant is seeking approval after the fact of the current patio, uh, shelter, current patio shelter color. The columns and ceiling of the patio shelter have been painted Sherwin-Williams 7636 origami white earlier this year without approval from the DRB. The original color was Sherwin-Williams 7076 web gray, which is carried through onto the facade of the, the, the building. Um, the site is in red, outlined in red on your screen. The circle in the middle is the, uh, location of the building in question. Um, you can see Shelter Cove Park behind the site up here, and 278 is running diagonally on the right-hand side of the, of the slide. Let me know, does, if anybody does not know where we are, let me know now. Okay, we're moving forward. It's just some lag time. My apologies. Going to look at some slides around the area, um, that, uh, just to give you a flavor of what's going on and, and the detail there. This is New York City Pizza exterior there in Shelter Cove Town Center. Poseidon, the exterior patio at Poseidon. There's the side view of Jane and Fabrique. Uh, this was a color, um, sample of origami held up against the back. I think it's the back, uh, service yard, yeah, Jane's Service Yard. Um, it should be pointed out that it may appear to match, but, um, staff went back and looked up. Origami white was not one of the colors that was, um, on the DRB approval, uh, for Shelter Cove Town Center. Uh, there's, you know, it, the intervening years and sun have probably faded the colors out, no doubt. But, uh, origami white was not one of the colors that was approved. Same here against the Fabrique building color. Again, apologies, there's a lag time. There we go. Uh, the Jane's, uh, or the service yard in the back there, so the view of that. The Wayback Burger columns. Kroger. The Talbot's Building. Belk, well, I'm sorry, that's actually Belk in the background, but there's the, the, um, shelter, the, the patio cover that we're speaking about right there. The columns here, um, and the, the ceiling of the patio were what have been painted. And I believe there's, I'm sorry, there's another, that corridor between, uh, Jane and Fabrique. And you can see the columns there that, in the background. Now, this is the original building, the original, uh, painting of the building. So you can see the column here and the underst- and the, and the roof of the patio were that, uh, web gray that carries again over onto the, the building up here at the cornice. And there's how it looks now. Again, this is the current conditions. Staff's suggestion is that the columns and these beams, these beams in the patio be painted the web gray, but the ceiling of the patio remain the origami white. There's a column detail existing, the current color, not the original, the current color. There's a column detail existing, the current color, not the original, the current color. Another shot of the patio. Though staff recommends approval with the condition that the columns and ceiling beams be repainted Sherwin-Williams 7075 Web Gray, the original color.
Okay, thank you, Chris. And again, you'll have a chance, everyone will have a chance to ask Chris or the applicant questions coming up. But Chris, I have a question for you. We received a letter separate from the original submittal. Could you please address that?
Yes, sir. The DRB, we're required to obtain local, a determination from the local ARB, wherever that is. If it's in Steepines, in this case in Shelter Cove, we, you all do not have to have an approval from them. It's just a determination. So the determination both from the landowner and the Shelter Cove ARB are deferring to your all's suggestions essentially. But it's just a, a technical issue to make sure that we have a determination from the local ARB.
Okay, thank you. All right. So is that all, Chris, on your end?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay, all right. Is the applicant present? And if so, could you please identify your name and your company?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. My name is Anne Sargent. I am the owner and operator of Jane Bistro and Bar in Shelter Cove Town Center.
All right, thank you. Would you like to, you have a 10-minute window. Would you like to add anything to the staff's presentation?
Yes, I would like to start by offering my sincerest apologies for failing to apply to the DRB for permission to change the color, color. I truly think the COVID quarantine and the loss of business and just all the craziness clouded my better judgment. So I do sincerely apologize for that. You know, I, I hope that after review, if you've had a chance to visit the space, you're able to see that, you know, aesthetic and being tasteful is definitely, it's at the top priority of our business model. And in my thought process, I chose to match the color that was used on the rear of our building and used at the majority of the other restaurants, outdoor dining spaces. I really did take a lot of time to walk around and tried to be as thoughtful as process or as possible. But my overall thought process was to change to the white rather than the brown to give our customers a bright surface that would be transparent to the cleanliness procedures and maximize our ability to properly sanitize the surfaces. While we were shut down, I really, you know, I took that time to do as much as I could to the space as far as upkeep and making as many, you know, what I felt were positive changes so we could reopen really on our best foot. You know, again, my attempt was really to be thoughtful and considerate to the town center. I, you know, again, I apologize. We did make a substantial investment in improving the quality of the paint. We did add additional additives through Sherwin-Williams to improve the longevity and protection against mold or staining, which is definitely positive. I'm sure, you know, you've seen many times down in the South, mold can take over any exterior very quickly. So I was, I was happy to do that. I would, I would, I guess I would just like to, again, give my sincere apologies. And then I hope upon review, you will approve the color that I chose. I do, this is the first time, the picture of the cornice that is painted web gray and still remains web gray. I also would be more than willing to have that changed so everything was more consistent. And my only concern is that if we went back to the web gray, my disappointment would be that the, the, the web gray, you know, once it was up, has found itself to be very cavernous. Once you're underneath the patio and the change that we've made in the white has really opened up the space quite a bit. I also am concerned about the conflicting, having the two different colors versus one clean color scheme. Because if you have been inside the Jane space, many people have commented that it is, there is, there is lots of white inside. We have the shiplaff. We have the white brick. And I, the overall design is just, it's very simplistic and clean. And I'm afraid if I had two colors going on outside, it might be conflicting. That is, that's all I have, other than to say that, you know, this is certainly not a reason, but I might as well put myself out there. My industry is incredibly stressed right now. We are taking financial hit after financial hit with our limitations. And this would be a very great expense and would exacerbate our stressful time. But I certainly, you know, respect your thoughts. And again, I sincerely apologize.
Okay, thank you very much. And stay tuned because I'm sure some of our board members will have questions.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. So Ms. Teresa, I think I did the, I did, I think I did something wrong because I'm now looking at my color-coded map. I'm supposed to call on everyone, correct, for them to respond because everything's in red on my sheet? Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to call the, the discussion order.
Okay, all right. I'll just, I'll just let you do that. And then if we ever go back to a live audience, we'll, we'll, we'll switch back. So okay, so I'll turn it over to you, Teresa, to please, for discussion order.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. McAllister?
All right. Admittedly, I struggled a little bit with this because, you know, we have the opportunity to look at what's already been painted and installed and see what it looks like in the context. But then I also have to think, would we approve this, you know, on paper if it came before us? And, you know, admittedly, it doesn't look out of context. It doesn't look out of place to me with the surrounding buildings. You know, Shelter Cove Town Center was approved by a different board. There, there are colors in there now that I'm not sure I would be on board with. But I guess that's neither here nor there. What I kind of struggle with is, is the, you know, you've got the tabby facade, which is kind of white, and then you've got the white columns. And, and to me, it just, the facade reads very white. And while it does look very nice, it, you know, we're, our job is to uphold the design guidelines. And, you know, part of that is looking at nature blending colors. So for that reason, I'm, I'm, I'm in support of staff's comments. But, you know, I'm a little torn admittedly on it. So I'm definitely interested in hearing what other board members have to say.
Ms. Remke?
I actually like the white. I agree with some of Ms. Sargent's comments from her customers. It feels a little cavernous in there when it was dark and kind of dreary. The white is very crisp. There was a special a while ago, some banquettes in the white columns, and I think that works well. There's some greenery in there that I think worked well with it. The majority of the, of the columns, not all of them, but the majority of the columns in that complex, whereas there's outdoor dining, are some form of white. I, I would leave it. I like it that way. I think the cornice, the web gray cornice could stay. It gives it a little bit of definition against the brick. But I like the columns in white. Thank you.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes, thanks. I, I agree. I like the white. I think that the web gray is too dark and dreary looking. The white's very bright, fresh, clean. Contrast nice with the, with the brick and the, the green plantings that are around there. And it feels very, very current. So, you know, other than them having it painted without approval, I think, I think the white looks very appropriate. Thank you.
Ms. Lippert?
For me, in looking at the other examples, I drove by them. While a lot of them have white columns, every single one except the Talbot's, which doesn't really have a space, has a dark ceiling or fascia component to it. And to me, that is, so in a way, I'm thinking of reversing staff comments because I do like the white columns. And I guess my proposal, because of the light fixtures also, would be to retain the white columns and beams, but keep, but get the ceiling back to the web gray. Because I don't believe that I would have been in support of the light fixtures with the white ceiling. They really jump out at you now. And it's not, they're not up light fixtures, so it's not a reflectivity issue as far as loss of lighting. So to me, I guess my recommendation is that the ceiling plain go back to the web gray, which helps tie it back in and is in line with a lot of the other spaces, whether it's Wayback Burger, whether it's the Crowers. They have the gray ceilings or fascias and keep the white beams and columns.
Thank you. Ms. Foss?
I think that there, there's too much white the way it is now. It's very white. As I think Ms. Remke said, it's crisp, but that's not the intent behind the design guidelines. I agree. I understand why you painted it that way. But I think staff's comments of leaving or making the columns and the ceiling beams, the web gray, and letting the ceiling, actual ceiling stay white will help reflect light in that space and kind of get the same look that you were intending by keeping it a little bit airier and cleaner looking. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay, thank you. Question for Chris. I'm, I'm going back to this, their, their version of the ARB letter, the Shelter Cove ARB. It said in a letter that origami white was not an approved color by their ARB. Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, you have me at a disadvantage. I don't have the letter in front of me. I'm working to pull it up right now.
Same.
I mean, if, if you have it in front of you and it says it, then it says it.
Trying to. Bear with me. I hope I don't hang up. I'm not very good at this.
We're trying to pull it up right now, too.
Yeah, yeah. See if.
Got it.
Yeah.
Now I lost my picture. Let's see here.
I can share the screen.
Oh, can you share the screen? We're, Mr. Chairman, we're going to share the screen right now with that letter.
Okay, I just lost my visual on everybody. Let me see what happened here. There we go. There you are. All right. Technology. Okay, let's look at this letter here.
Mr. Chairman, I have the letter on the screen for you.
Yeah, I can see it. If everybody wouldn't, wouldn't mind reading that. I'll spare you my voice. Everybody can just read it to themselves. But it, but the highlight of that letter says, "The requested color is not in compliance with the approved color palette for Shelter Cove. Exterior should be repainted in the original color Sherwin-Williams Web Gray." Okay, that's from their DRB, which we are not held to. But my question is, if we approve something that they don't, who wins?
You have, you have final say. They can go back. The applicant will have to go back to the Shelter Cove and request the repaint to match your all's approval.
So if we agree the origami white and the, and the owner still says no, it just seems like, you know, an enigma, an endless loop.
Right. The other, the only other party in this is the applicant. So the applicant's going to have to make a change to satisfy both the local ARB and the DRB. And in other words, if they can't, if, if the local ARB is not going to approve origami white, but the DRB will, they're going to have to come up with another color that can, that can satisfy both groups.
Okay, okay. That's what I was getting at. Okay, so, thank you. I'm, I'm, I'm torn. I'm 100% sympathetic to everyone's situation and plight these days. But the guidelines really don't allow us to approve white. So my, my question, and I don't know if, if Chris can answer this, this might be a rhetorical question. But how did so many other columns in Shelter Cove get to be white? If that's not an approved color? Because it sure looks like that's the color. It sure looks like origami white, like everywhere. Was that a prior DRB decision?
Those were, the, the colors in Shelter Cove were all approved by the prior DRB. I would remind you that Shelter Cove is one of those areas on the island that there's more liberty taken with the nature blending color selection or color palette. So in other words, something that may be acceptable in Shelter Cove because of its Mediterranean kind of character, you know, we've got the, those tile roofs, terracotta tile roofs that you wouldn't see other places. But things can be approved there because of the surrounding, the surroundings and the, the character of that, that specific area that cannot be approved or would not be approved other places on the island. Yeah.
Yeah, you says, yeah, you said exactly what I wanted you to say, just for everybody's information, without me having to say it. You, you sound so much more legal when you say it, so. So those are kind of the rules we're, we're, we're playing with here. The way, and if I throw my own summary at it is that if this were presented to us, say this were the, the new smokehouse, okay, that we looked at three, four months ago. If they came to us with white columns, we would just automatically reject it. And I think they did have some white colors in that proposal that we told them to go darker. So we're dealing with a little different animal here, if that changes anybody's mind on, on the board. I think Mr. McAllister led off and said it, I think, exactly right, is it doesn't look out of context. I think it fits with everything else. It just doesn't fit the guidelines, but it doesn't fit the guidelines if this building were somewhere else. I think it fits within the precedent that has been set at Shelter Cove. So in, with all that, trying to be objective as possible, because it kind of looks like we got about a 50/50 split here. If you can be 50/50 with five people, that. got about a 50/50 split here, if you can be 50/50 with five people, that it seems like everybody's sort of okay with it, except Kathy was the one, Ms. Foss was the one that came out and said she totally supported what staff said. And I would, too, were we not in Shelter Cove. So my my inclination is to side with Ms. Rimsky and Mr. Molesky and probably mostly Mr. McAllister and say that it's okay. Now, we do not, we do not endorse doing things without approval, and the applicant was very gracious in their apology. But I'm I'm in favor of granting them approval as installed. So if anyone would like a second round of, and you don't have to listen to me, everybody can vote against me. That's this is still a, what happens to this, Chris, if we get a 3-3 vote here?
If you have a tie vote, you are denied, or it is not you are denied, the application is denied. And, yeah, they have, it needs to be repainted to the original color.
Okay, so my, so we either need to make a motion to staff's, Annette's comments were great also. I think that was that, and that was just kind of the lone wolf in that, making the ceiling gray. But if anybody wants to agree with Annette in the second round, you are welcome. But I would say we make a motion for either what staff has suggested, or we allow them to keep it, and then we vote on those two. And if it's a tie, then then the they would have to return it to normal. So does that make sense to everybody? And now I'll open it up. If anybody would like a second round, just raise your hand. David, go ahead.
Yeah, you know, like I said initially, I was torn. I think it looks, it doesn't look out of place. It's not out of context. And, you know, after the discussion about the uniqueness of Shelter Cove, I would support a motion as it is. So maybe that'll settle any tie discussion.
And again, we don't all have to agree. You know, you vote what you believe is right because that's what, you know, we heard the swearing in today, and that's what you're voting on, to do what you think is best. So, Annette, you had your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, to me, while I'm hearing, you know, there's a lot that does feel like it fits. To me, the concern with keeping it all white and then having the black fixtures, that's that's sort of why I had made the recommendation of maybe changing part of it back. I I think I would be more open to keeping the white if and the fixtures get a little lighter. But that contrast between the all of that white and then the black lights and the black fans, to me, is what's not working as an overall.
That's a good point. Either the applicant or Chris, are you able to answer this? Was the ceiling originally gray or was the ceiling originally white?
The ceiling was originally web gray. And that was that was staff's comment, what our staff's suggestion was to try to find a middle road to open up and and and, well, open up and address the applicant's concerns about it being so cavernous under there. So the idea was to keep the ceiling the white so that there would be a little bit more, it would be a little bit lighter, and then returning the columns and the beams to the web gray.
Okay, thank you. So I guess there are three options here, and it'll depend, oh, sorry, Deb, Ms. Rimsky?
Commenting on the black light fixtures, in my studies, I was always told that a little black anchor in a room is a good thing. I like the contrast of the black and the white. Again, I like the Christmas crispness of it. And I like the fact that it feels like it's very outdoors with the white. So I'm not in favor of changing the light fixtures. I like them the way they are.
Yeah, and that would probably be a more of an expense than repainting, I would think. So I'd like to avoid that if possible. But I'm, anyone else, second round? Ms. Foss, do you have anything? Or John?
Sorry, I have to cut in for a split second. My computer is about to run out of power. I have to run, get a power cord. I thought it would last. I will be right back.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right, so we'll we'll pause. Because we, I don't think we can have any discussions if a voting member is not present, so. We can talk about anything.
Hey, we could change the name to Jane's Cavern, and then it won't matter if it's cavernous.
Baseball's back, yeah.
This is like when there's a bunch of strangers in an elevator, and everybody just gets real quiet until you, it's time to get off.
Sorry about that.
I think we lost Debbie now. You'll you'll discover, Annette, that we just.
Right here.
We just, we talk a lot, so. Okay, anyone else on the second round before we, before I ask for a motion? Is that a Kathy, Ms. Foss?
I, looking at this picture right here, kind of just gives that whole feeling of it's so white. I mean, it's all white because they've got the white furniture, the white columns, the white ceilings. I agree with Ms. Lippert's assessment that those lamps really stand out. And that's why I think if the columns and the beams kind of went back to the web gray, we would take that all that contrast out, not have so much white, and I really think it would look better.
Okay. Okay, so just kind of gauging, because if this, I want I want to help the, I always try to help the applicant move forward. I don't want to leave them in a spot. So I think logically, our our best bet is to make a motion to allow them to keep it as it is, and we vote on that. And this is just a suggestion. Y'all are open to to do it. And if it gets voted for, it gets voted for, and they can keep it. If it gets voted down, then they have to revert to what they had. So then, so it, so those are pretty much the two options. If we go to the third option, I think our votes are going to be split all over the place, and I don't think we'll get anywhere. So, but that's just a suggestion. And that?
But that means then they would be going back to all gray versus where the staff is recommending them to allow at least some of the white. So I guess maybe I'm recommending that we would have the two options be either the keeping or the staff comments, so that they get to keep some of the whites if it goes that direction.
Okay, so the motion would be to to go per staff comments? Okay, all right. So the other side of that coin is if that gets voted down, then they have to go back to what they had, which was everything was gray. All right, so this is a tough one. I guess we'll go in in order of rank if 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 someone would like to make a motion, or you may defer. So I'm going to, I'm going to, the vice chairman, then Ms. Rimsky, then Mr. McAllister, and we'll work down the line. So I'm going to ask for a motion from Ms. Foss. You may defer if you like.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion for Jane Bistro, DRB-001199-2020, to repaint the columns and the ceiling beams, back to Sherwin-Williams 7076 Web Gray, and leave the ceiling white. Thank you.
All right. And before anyone seconds it, that would mean that, again, the two options would be you're painting the columns and the beam's gray, or everything goes back to gray. That's pretty much what we're dealing with. So do we have a second? And then, and by rules, if we don't get a second motion, I ask for a re-motion.
Excuse, am I able to speak?
Um, who said that?
That, this is, this is Annie Sargent, the owner. I was just.
Mr. Chairman.
I don't think you can during a motion.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Okay, sorry.
And so maybe if I can ask you to clarify the procedural, if we were to, let's say, all defer, I realize that doesn't really get us any, like, in the end, we.
Then it doesn't pass. If it gets to me, if it gets to me, I'll make a motion. So, but what I'm doing here is, just because we're a we're a divided group here, you know, usually division in this is a is a five to one, or, you know, maybe even a four to two vote. But we're, we're kind of down the middle on this, I think. So, so I'm just going in hierarchy. Ms. Foss, being the vice chairman, had a chance to make a motion. If you don't agree with her emotion, don't second it, okay? If you agree with her motion, second it, and then that's the motion we will vote on. I will then go to Ms. Rimsky if if there is no second, because Ms. Rimsky is is next, and time served. And then Mr. McAllister would be next. If there's no, no second, no motion, no second, Mr. Molesky would be next. And then with you being the benefit of your first day, Ms. Lippert, you would be at the tail end. And then I would be the cleanup batter if we need one. So, so I'm going to pause about five seconds. If there's no second on the motion, I'm going to move to Ms. Rimsky.
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I interrupt and make a suggestion? You don't, you said you had, if you agreed with the the motion, you could second it. Let me just reiterate that you don't have to agree with a motion if you just want to get it to the to vote. In other words, somebody might might second and second Kathy's motion just so they could get it to the vote, and then the vote, it would be denied, or that it would be voted down.
Yeah, yeah. So anyone's free to second it. So, but if it gets seconded, it goes to a vote. Okay, so I'm, for the record, Ms., no one seconded Ms. Foss's motion. So I'm going to now move to Ms. Rimsky. Ms. Rimsky, would you like to make a motion?
I would, but I don't have all the DRB numbers in front of me. I might need somebody's help with that.
You have a pencil?
Yes.
Okay, it's Jane Bistro, DRB-001199-2020.
Okay. I make a motion for Jane Bistro, DRB-001199-2020, to deny the comments from staff and leave the property as is.
Okay. Do we have a second on that motion?
I second.
We have a second by Mr. Molesky. Okay, so we're going to take this to a vote. If you vote yes, they get to keep the colors as they are. If you vote no, it's going to go back to all gray. So, so that's my last comment, and I will ask Ms. Teresa to do roll call.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Lippert?
No.
Ms. Foss?
No.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Ms. Rimsky?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Looks like I'm the tiebreaker. I'm, for reasons I stated earlier, I'm going to vote yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes four to two. The applicant is a is allowed to keep the installation as installed. All right, thank you, everybody. That was a good discussion, very healthy discussion. All right, so, Nick, and the applicant is, is, and Sergeant, the applicant is is free to log off. Next project is Schooner Court, DRB-001283-2020. Chris?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant is requesting approval of a change to the exterior color of the buildings. The proposed color scheme is selected to reflect the aesthetic of Portofino, Italy, after which Harbor Town is modeled. On page 14 of the design guide, it speaks to context. The context of the structure must also be taken into account, and consideration shall be given to compatibility with other development in the area. Distinctive vernacular styles like Georgian or Mediterranean are to be avoided except where already established in the defined neighborhoods, end quote. The property is outlined in red on your screen. Those are, that's the boundary of the of the property. Now, you should note that the development, again, here is the property. There's a, it, there are two ARBs in this development with the other ARB being on this side here. And then you can see Harbor Town, the distinctive harbor, just to the bottom of your screen, and the Harbor Town area in this area here shown. If you don't know where you are, please let me know right now. Again, my apologies for the, there we go. There's sort of an aerial, another aerial view of the of the project, of the site. Again, you can see the the second extension of that development on the right-hand side. There's another aerial view, looking at it more from the water. Harbor Town, in this picture, is to the upper right. Again, there we go. Every time I start to apologize, it flips. This is Portofino, Italy, a picture of Portofino, Italy. I thought it was important to pull that in so that we get a flavor of what Harbor Town is kind of modeled after. This is another sort of a pulled-out view of, again, Portofino, Italy. This is looking at some of the buildings on around Harbor, the Harbor Town, buildings around Harbor Town. There you go. Again, just some of the colors and the buildings around Harbor Town. These are existing colors that are down there in Harbor Town. These are existing colors that are down there in Harbor Town. It's staff's understanding from the applicant that this has been a long process for them in the color selection. Uh, so there were some, uh, patches done, uh, just to kind of get an idea or feel for how, uh, those colors were gonna work. So here's an original image of the, the actual buildings that we're looking at and considering. These are unpainted. Still unpainted, and these are prior to what he worked that would be done, what's down there now. Okay, here's where we get to look at the, uh, a bit, the, um, colors applied to the buildings. So you can see the colors on the screen. There were, uh, there was a sample available for, uh, viewing earlier today at the town. Cause I know some of these colors get lost in translation on the screen as well, honestly, as well as in chips. Um, but it's nice to view them outside. But here's just some images that have been altered to show what the buildings might look like with these colors on them. Um, and they do have ARB approval. Um, the approval is, I will run through, well, I have several of them. I'm not gonna run through them all, but they're very specific about the unit. And what color goes where, um, on the, on that approval. So, um, while adjacent to Harbor Town's, Harbor Town, and understanding what Harbor, Harbor Town is fashioned after, staff's recommendation is for denial in favor of a more nature-blending color scheme.
Thanks, Chris. Chris, is that, um, is that across the board, or did staff find any of the colors acceptable?
Um, I, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I haven't cherry picked any colors.
Okay. Thank you very much, and, um, are you finished, Chris? Sorry.
Yes, sir, I'm finished. Thank you.
Uh, is the applicant present, and if so, please identify with your name and your company, please.
Yes, sir. My name is Jim Cancello Po, and I'm a Seapines resident, and I'm also Chair of the Painting Committee for Schooner Court Thirty Homeowners Association.
Okay. Nice to have you.
I'm Greg Nguyen. Oops, sorry. Greg Nguyen, GW Services. We're the property management company for Schooner Court.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen, and, um, you have a ten-minute time limit. You may both talk, or one of you could just talk. Would you like to add anything, uh, to the staff comments, uh, for the board members' consideration?
Great, thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Uh, first of all, I want to thank everyone on the board. Uh, this is my first experience with a DRB, and I'm really impressed with the thoughtful, um, nature of how you all go about making decisions, and, uh, the last conversation with, uh, Jane's Bistro, I think, was, uh, really, really, uh, you know, interesting to hear, and the different concepts. So thank you for allowing me to, um, present to you this morning, uh, the thoughtfulness of the entire process. Um, as you can see from some of the pictures that Chris put up, uh, our structures have not been repainted for quite some time. They're, they're very faded. Um, and we are approaching our normal cycle of needing to repair rotten wood trim and cracked stucco, and, and frankly, a complete paint refresh. Uh, the Homeowners Association Board has done a great job of, of reserving over the years, so we have plenty of cash to be able to, um, do this project without having any type of additional, um, call to the homeowners, which, uh, was very favorably looked upon. And, um, so at that point, the Homeowners Association in the early spring of two thousand nineteen established a painting committee. And somehow I was put in charge of it. I don't, not quite sure how that happened. I think everyone stepped backwards, and I was still standing there, but, uh, it's a year of my life that I will certainly never get back. Um, but I embraced it, and, uh, we were very thoughtful in the process. Uh, I began by having an organizational meeting on July ninth, two thousand nineteen, uh, with, to ask the homeowners some basic questions and to lay out steps over the next two years to accomplish the total refresh of Schooner Thirty. Um, my goal was to be transparent and inclusive as possible with all the homeowners. So I polled the group that was in attendance that day, and, and then personally called every homeowner that was not in attendance and asked the question, specific color aside for the moment, would you be willing to change the colors of our buildings? And the answer was a unanimous yes for all twenty-one homeowners. Now, you all have been doing this a lot longer than I have, and that, I believe, is a small miracle to get a unanimous consent out of any homeowners association, let alone this one. So at that point, uh, it was where we really embraced Charles Frazier's original intent of going back to the original development of Harbor Town Yacht Basin and following the colors of Portofino. We were not unique in, in this decision. Obviously, you can see through Chris's, uh, previous pictures, uh, many buildings around the Harbor Town Yacht Basin has already embarked on this, uh, effort of going back to the Portofino look. In fact, I think almost every single building, um, i- if not all, are actually multi-color, uh, units with our development sort of being the lagger, uh, and also being out in front there by the lighthouse. You know, it's quite noticeable that everyone else has went to the multi-color units, and we're still, you know, staying with our faded-out colors. So this is, this is quite timely. So I began, we began, the committee began, to search for blocks of colors. We looked at Benjamin Moore, we looked at Sherwin-Williams, we looked at Lowe's, we looked at Home Depots. We didn't want to be too bright, uh, with our colors, and we didn't want to be too drab in tone. And after removing all the extremely dark colors and all the whites, because we knew the white colors would not get approved, we landed on a block of about fifty colors from Sherwin-Williams. And the large reason why we went with Sherwin-Williams was because the local, local Sherwin-Williams rep store was really good, but more importantly, we had access to a graphic designer, uh, in Detroit with Sherwin-Williams, who worked with me on overlaying these fifty colors on all of the, all of our buildings. So some of the visions that you see that Chris is, is putting through was the work of Sherwin-Williams Graphic Designer, and we basically used those, you know, fifty colors overlaying as a starting point with a process of elimination. So before I started that process, I took the block of fifty colors and formally went to the ARB, who gave their blessing that if we landed on any of these colors, the board would most likely look favorably on them and approve it. And I really, you know, we're, we're big rule followers, and I didn't want to go through this process without making sure I was in the ballpark, uh, with our color selections for Seapines. So, um, you know, that was really important to get that blessing on the front end. Um, I then began sending out these colors, uh, overlaid on our buildings to the twenty-one homeowners of Schooner Four Thirty, and I asked them to tell me twenty colors they didn't like. And so from there, we narrowed it down to thirty. Four more rounds of elimination emails and calls landed us on five colors. At that point, I asked Greg Nguyen, our property manager, to put them up on the common wall inside our parking area, so everyone could see them from the sunlight and actual stucco. So Chris, if you don't mind just putting up, um, the one exhibit, I believe it's exhibit seven, uh, of the, the four colors that are on the wall. That, that's it. Great, thank you, sir. So, we engaged, when we put these colors up, we engaged, uh, three architects, Neil Gordon, Tom Parker, and Tom Cruz, to help us with tonality, color endurance, and, and certainly compliance with ARB standards. The colors were adjusted here, and the homeowners were voted, and, and the homeowners voted on the adjusted colors to try to get the tonality perfect. Uh, and we landed on these final four colors. And so, um, now I had to go back to the, all the homeowners and ask them the really tough question. Would you prefer all the buildings one color? Would you prefer multi-color by building or multi-color by unit? And the majority of the votes, and it actually may have been a supermajority, was to paint the structures multi-color by villa. So from there, I drafted my findings to the board of Schooner Thirty, and the board unanimously approved the paint color change. The color selection was then taken to the ARB, where it's approved without issue, and then we were informed that we had to get the town to sign off on it. I asked Greg Nguyen to begin getting paint quotes, so if we had formal approval from this committee, we would be ready to paint the building, uh, in the off-season. And then I received a call, uh, from Greg Nguyen that the town staff was going, uh, to be recommending our, against our color selection because of the time, town guidance was to only have earth-ton colors, uh, on properties that were adjacent to, um, waterways. This is when I called Chris Darnell and had a very nice conversation with him, and by the way, he's, he's really a terrific, uh, person to work with. Uh, and he encouraged me, uh, to present our process and our due diligence, uh, to all of you today. Uh, there is a precedent to go back to the vision of Charles Frazier, of having the Portofino look on all the buildings surrounding the harbor, and that movement started long before us, as evidenced by the following exhibits. Exhibit one. Chris, if you had those, I exhibited, I numbered them in my email. So exhibit one would be multi-color by villa for Catch Court. I think that might have been the very first picture you showed. That's it, right there. So that, that's exhibit one, multi-color by, uh, villa by Catch Court. Exhibit, exhibit two is the villas on Harbor Town Yacht Basin. So if you want to go back to the shorter villas that are on the basin, view more. Right there. And then exhibit three and four, which were the bold colors on the commercial space, and if you want to rotate back to, uh, that's the Harbor Town Yacht Club, as well as the commercial, that's it, right there, the commercial, uh, space, uh, there in Harbor Town. And then lastly, um, the exhibit five, which is the villas along the eighteenth fairway. That's that beautiful yellow home, uh, that, that you put up. There it is, and those are multi-color units down, down the row. This is the infamous, famous, uh, eighteenth fairway of Harbor Town, which is beautiful with all these, these multi-colors going down there. And so then Clipper Court is currently considering, at this time, if you go to exhibit six, you will see a palette of six or seven or eight, uh, colors. Chris, if you could take us there. That's it, thank you. So this is Clipper Court. They're in their due diligence process as well, and clearly, you know, I see colors here that I don't, you know, foresee potentially getting approved either at the ARB or at this committee, the white ones, notably. Uh, and so, we, we just wanted to show you what they were considering, because pretty much all the buildings, um, you know, around Harbor Town have already gone down this path or almost finished going down this path. So if you could put up exhibit seven, which is our colors, our four colors on the wall, Chris. So you can see our tonality, um, that was painted here is really a happy medium in between everything that's already there. So there's colors that are, 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 are less vibrant, and then there's colors that are, you know, pretty bold. So we're really, you know, thoughtful and, and cautious, and we're really enlisted.
Okay, excuse me, excuse me. I'll, I'll extend, I'll extend, uh, the applicant's time, another four minutes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, you have four more minutes, uh, uh, Jim.
Thank you, sir. I'm almost done. And so you can see here, it was a long year and a very thoughtful process of trying to get really nice colors that weren't too bright and weren't too dull. Um, and really just kept within Charles Frazier's vision, uh, of, of having all the, the, the buildings around, um, the Harbor Town Yacht Basin being, being painted Portofino. So, you know, it's at this point that I'm respectfully requesting, uh, the committee to approve our color selection, uh, to allow us to finish off what has already been started, uh, in the Harbor Town Yacht Basin, and that's returning back to Charles Frazier's original intent. So, so that is my presentation, and I want to thank you for the, uh, extension of time.
You're welcome, and thank you. It was a very, uh, insightful, uh, due diligence there, so, um, that really helps me. Uh, let's see here. So let's, uh, move on to discussion order. Ms. Teresa, if you would like to, and again, you can ask questions of the applicant or, or of, uh, Chris. Uh, go ahead, Teresa.
Ms. Remke? Sorry, I didn't realize I was up next. Um, you know, we love beige, beige, and beige, as I like to say, but I like this idea of coming up with some new colors. Uh, looking at your four colors here, I'm very on board with two, three, and four, not so much blue. Number one, it looks a little bit bright, but, you know, uh, I understand the work you've gone through with Sherwin-Williams. I've, I've done that with them myself. Um, I think the idea of painting each individual unit in a, in a row of buildings a different color is a good idea. I've got just a couple of questions, because we just went through this with another unit. When you paint the building, are you also painting the fascia and the soffit the same color? And I'm not sure if you have downspouts. I couldn't see downspouts on there. But will the whole unit be painted the same color?
Uh, no, ma'am. The shutters will be blue, the door will be blue.
Okay, fascia and soffit is what I'm asking about.
Yeah, the fascia and soffit. Greg, do you want to comment on that?
Uh, right now, which, it's gonna blend in right into the building.
Okay, that's, that's fine.
That's the point.
Um, it looks like there are different colors on the roofs. Is that so?
Yeah, so let me address that. Um, that, that certainly is, you know, something that I pointed out, and, um, what happened was, um, the, the, during Hurricane Matthews, a lot of these roofs, there was about five of them that got, uh, or four, four out of five of them were replaced, and it looks like the color was different, and maybe it was from fading, maybe it was, you know, an off-color choice. Uh, I'm not sure how they got that way, but, uh, I, I have actually had conversations with the homeowners board that, um, I really think that if we get approval here, I'd like to swap out those five roofs to, to match. I, I think it's really critical that all the roofs match in color, uh, to really blend nicely with all the multi-colors, and, and, you know, whether the homeowner pays for it, or the, the, the homeowner association pays for it, you know, my recommendation at this point would be just for the homeowners association as part of this overall refresh to, you know, replace, they're not terribly big, uh, to replace those five roofs to, um, be able to be, um, in coordination with the multi-colors, because I, I think I know where you're going with your questioning, and I agree with you.
Okay. Um, just to kind of summarize my thoughts, I, I'm on board with these colors. I think that's a good thing to get rid of some of the beige and, and go with a little lighter, brighter things, and, um, I would approve this. Mr. Molesky?
Well, this is a top one here, guys. Uh, I mean, first of all, I, I need to definitely commend you on, uh, on, on, on all the work that you did here, and, and appreciate, like, uh, Mr. Gentman said, you, you sharing all that, very insightful, and, uh, very well thought out and presented to us, so, thanks, thanks for all those efforts. As somebody who, who also lives in Seapines and, and appreciates the importance of, of this area, I see, you know, a very difficult task. Uh, let's see, on the positive side, I, I, I'm on board with doing the multiple colors. Um, I'm okay with getting away with the, with the beige, beige, beige thing, especially in this area, but I guess the other, the challenge is with all the tourism and the heritage and, and the residents in there, you know, this, this gets an awful lot of exposure. Um, I wish I could offer more suggest- Um, I wish I could offer more suggestions on to the the colors that were presented. I think that was great that you reached out to. Uh, the local architects to to get some input from them as well. But I guess in in general, just stepping back and looking at the colors that are there, for me, it it just looks like that. I I don't want to use the word, uh, I don't know what the right word is here. It looks like it just kind of cheapens the overall imagery there. I mean, I I definitely love what was done in catch court and on eighteenth fairway. And for all I know, the four colors that you landed on might be the exact same colors that I'm seeing. Uh, on the catch court samples as well as on the eighteenth fairway. Perhaps something that will also complement just the colors there is maybe once the landscaping is freshened up and and how you're going to address the uh. Uh, the the screening, it looks like maybe what six foot tall vertical. You know, boards that are that are there, whether those are service yard, uh, how how that will also complement the shutters, you know, there's so many moving parts here. But I hate to get hung up on the four actual body colors, and maybe that's all we're asked to um review today. But, you know, I I I would need, you know, more information to feel comfortable with approving this, you know, I I. And maybe I could directly ask you, are the colors that I see there for the shutters, that's part of this submittal and. Uh, the service yard there, will that all be painted that? I don't know how to pronounce it ache ivory color is is that? Let me let me just pointedly ask you that. Is that the intention?
So thank you for so thank you for the questions. And and let me just say that the the four colors that you're seeing up on the screen are just. You know, really not indicative of how look how nice this is going to be. I I think if you went down and saw the common wall. Uh, inside of the parking area of schooner thirty, you you certainly would get a really good feel with the sunlight. Uh, with the against, you know, the sunlight against the colors on the texture of the stucco. I I think it will in the end give you the same result. Uh, that you mentioned about being so favorable with catch court and uh and the home down uh down the eighteenth fairway. I will tell you, the next um project on the docket is to redo all of our service yards. So in in the interim, it will remain the gray uh with these colors, but uh we do have it on the board of directors docket. Uh, one year from completing this project to begin a a complete redesign and refresh of the storage areas, the outdoor areas. Uh, which at that point in time, you know, the the structure redesign and the color, we will certainly be prepared to come back here. Um, and 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 request input and and final approval from the D R B. But at this point. We're just, we can only afford to do the colors and and so, you know, we'll do that. And then next year, we'll focus on the on the on the on the outside service areas. And then the balconies as well is also included in on that project. So I think we'll get where you where you where we're hopeful. We're all, I'm all in agreement with you. I don't want it to look cheap. I'm a I live there personally. Um, and I love Harbor Town. I've been coming here since nineteen eighty-five. And, you know, it's certainly my goal to get this the nicest it can be. Uh, but I will tell you our current color of of beige. I mean, Chris, you can throw the old one up. I mean, it's ugly. I mean, it's just tired and uh it it just needs a real refresh. And more importantly, we have wood rot that we need to replace, and we have some cracking in the struck stucco. So when I presented to the board, my my comment was what's more important to me is the the wealth and the well-being of the structures. You know, getting them refurbished from a from a maintenance perspective, and then obviously color color is important. But I'm I'm excited about fixing all the wood rot and and fixing all the cracks in the stucco. So this will last another twenty, thirty years.
And and thank you for sharing that. And with all that being said, there's also uh, no one will be addressing any of the uh. Uh, the landscaping at this time, either then it's just strictly the body color, the shutters. And then you alluded to perhaps uh addressing the the roof just to make them all consistent.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. And the landscaping is pretty um, we're we're on that. We are establishing a landscaping committee. Um, most I'll probably get somehow put in charge of that, I'm sure. Um, and we'll certainly, you know, fix the grass. The grass in the back is, you know, is dying. It's not, you know, we have irrigation system that's forty years old. And so there have been trees that have been uh removed. Uh, we have put beautiful lighting and brand new lighting and uplighting. So from a lighting perspective at night, if you walk down there, um, it it really looks terrific from the lighting perspective. So, you know, it's an ongoing project, as you know, things grow quickly around here. So it's a constant battle to keep everything in shape and and sized correctly. So we don't have anything overgrown.
Okay, thank you for sharing. I'm finished.
Thank you, Ms. Lippert.
Porfino example. Uh, sorry, I guess I was muted. Uh, Chris, I really appreciate that you included the Porfino Italy examples. And also some of the other examples around um Harbor Town to. I guess I should start by big picture. I think the idea of painting each unit a different color, I I'm on board with. But then looking at the details, I drove by there today. Unfortunately, I missed the wall that has the colors painted on it. There is a lot going on on these facades, and I think all of those aspects need to be um addressed. For me to be able to really be on board, uh, like it was already asked about the fascia and the soft colors. It was also um. The current uh flashing is white, so you have to add that into it. The windows and I I have to admit where I drove by, I didn't realize it was broken up into two A R Bs. So I believe I was looking at the other A R Bs units when I drove by, thinking it was the whole complex. So some of my my comments may be inaccurate, but I believe the existing fascias are as sort of all of. And so the question about what would the gutters and the downspouts be, I heard that the downspouts. Would likely be the same color as the facade, but then there's also these metal canopies over the back doors and. Um, and I do think that the balcony and service yards. Really need to be part of this design while I can understand that you don't, you may not be able to implement that in one phase. Knowing what they become is really important. And then, and I'll sort of go back to some of these items, but looking at the precedence, the biggest difference I'm seeing is that. There is not a dark shutter. And that also goes for, let's say, that villa example and exhibit one, they have a a hue off of the um. Facade color, not a very contrasting like, uh, yes, like in this one, you see that the shutters. Really are a shade lighter or a shade darker than the facade. They're not a separate color that jump out. And if you look at the Porfino example, it's also that each facade. Color has sort of gradations of it in it versus that stark contrast of the the shutters. So in this, we're seeing that if it's a yellow facade, it goes through the creams. If it it's one of the peachier or redder ones, it goes. Into sort of multiple shades of that. Um. So to me, I think I would need to know what the redesign of the service yard will be and balconies. Soon and I guess my second comment is that the shutter should not be such a contrast. And the details need to be thought of for fascia, downspouts, gutters. Flashing, metal roofs over the back doors and really have a detailed approach. Um, about the the new colors for the complex. That's that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Foss.
Thank you, um, Ms. Lippert, that you sort of said everything I've been thinking. Um, I agree. Wholeheartedly with the shutter colors being such a high contrast. To the client, is the existing um service yard fence the same color as the the ivy that you're proposing ivory?
Existing service fence would remain that current color. The downspouts would be blended in to be painted the color of the villa. And uh, we certainly, you know, that's an interesting uh observation on the shutters. We we certainly could amend. You know, amend this uh, you know, request to have the shutters, you know, a shade lighter or darker. Of keeping it in the same family of of each of the four colors, um, you know, along with the door, I would assume. But um. Yes, the gray the gray is going to remain for now, and so we do a complete redesign on the outdoor service area.
Thank you. Um, I agree that we probably need to see what those service yards look like and uh what the balconies are going to look like. I understand financial reasons that they couldn't be done right away, but it will give us. Help us get uh. As Pete, everyone has said, there's just a lot going on, and if we could pull it together so it looks more like Portofino, um, the pictures that we've seen. I think I could um approve the colors that you've got, but the shutters and the roof and the service yard. Um, the gutters, downspouts, everything going on is um. Too much contrast with then adding um these four colors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McAllister.
First of all, I'll go ahead and reiterate what some other folks have said. Uh, appreciate all the background you gave on um the process and how you came to these colors. Um, I think Ms. Lippert made some great observations, and I'm in agreement with a lot of what she said, as well as what Ms. Foss said. Um, you know, not having seen a real physical sample of of the material like that, I. I'm struck, I'm struggling really with, I look at the rendering and, you know, what we're seeing on the screen now and. Um, the yellow really jumps out at me. Um, when when you look at the Sherwin-Williams illustrative rendering. Um, and I I think part of my issue is the high contrast, and it really, I think, comes down to the shutters. Um, I think uh Ms. Lippert hit the nail on the head as far as the um shutters and, you know, going back to the um examples that. Um, you guys were looking at, I think that's the difference, and it just it jumps out at me. Um, you know, I'd like to get over there and look at the um paint on the stucco if I could. Um, that would make me feel more comfortable with it. Um, and I I do think that the um shutter colors need to be uh reevaluated at least. That's my initial thoughts.
Thank you. And Mr. Chairman.
I agree with every single thing Ms. Lippert said. Uh. And the follow-up by, actually, I raised, I think it's kind of saying the same thing. Uh, to me, the body colors are are good. The the Portofino's uh example is great. I think this keeps in vision with everything, you know, Charles Frazier wanted to do down here. Uh, your process, the applicant's process was. Incredible. Uh, I commend you for that. Um, you know, I I know sometimes it's hard to get things through Seapines. Um, that you got their agreement is is, you know, uh, you know, a check mark in your belt. Um, you enlisted the right people to talk to with Neil Gordon and Tom Cruz and Tom Parker. All very, you know, if you're going to talk Seapines architecture, you got the right three people. Um, so I'm on board with the project. I think it's great. I think everything you're gonna do. I can't get over the blue shutters, though. Um, I think that's the uh Ms. Lippert's suggestion of going a tone dark. A tone darker on each uh different building is the right answer. Um, also agree with her comments on how the railings and the fascias and the the little roofs and. So on and so forth need to be just taking that one more step in detail, and I think you you would have everybody on board. My suggestion might be here is if you can push this one more review board. That I might consider, and and Chris can 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 further tell you the benefits of this. Might withdraw and come back with a shutter color. And put and tell everybody where that little courtyard is. Uh, I totally missed that. I would have loved to have seen that. I saw the colors at the town. Um, and again, those are paint chips, and the paint chips are better than the photos we're looking at. But still, I think the seeing it in person by every member would really sell this. So. Um, so I think colors two, three and four look great in the photo, so I'm thinking they're going to look even better in person. Uh, blue shutters, I I wouldn't, I I'd I'd take Ms. Lippert's advice and go uh go a little darker. Um, the roofs I was worried about. You say that's upcoming. That doesn't give us much control over it other than you say it's coming. And I would really like to see all the items that Ms. Lippert brought up, the service yards. And everything just in more detail so we know what's getting covered with what, other than that, I'm on board. I think it's, I think it's great. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So I'll open it up to uh. Uh, and and I think a lot of your explanation sold a good part of it for me, that you just didn't throw some colors up on a photo and Photoshop it. So uh, you're you uh, your your committee did well to select you or or you failed to step back, as you said. Uh, but I think you did a great job in that. So I'm going to open it back up. Anybody? Second round of comments?
Mr. Chairman, this is Chris Darnell with the town. If I could make a suggestion. Um, this might be one of those projects where you want to table it to the next instead of withdrawing it. Um, might want to table it to the next meeting and get specific location of the wall. Um, I'm sorry, let me pull it up. Get a specific location for the this wall from the applicant. And maybe give the applicant an opportunity to consider some of the other uh points that the D R B has made so that he could come back with. A shutter color and maybe I I'm not trying to put words in the board's mouth, but maybe a a color for the um service yards. And and certainly the board could specify what they would like to see when they when he comes back.
I think that's a wonderful idea, and that's why we have Chris around. So. Um, so for this second round of comments, does anybody disagree with what Chris just said? I I would like to give the applicant the indication that the majority of the members feel this is appropriate. So that he can sleep at night and then come back with the the extra informa table this. And come back with the extra information that we requested. Does anybody uh have any objection to that? Everybody pretty much on board with the direction. I see a lot of heads shaking, so I'm feeling pretty good about that. All right, so um, this this, oh, Debbie, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Um, on these service yards, I think that the applicant explained to us uh in the start that. That would be a project that they would fund in the following year. So is that correct?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so if we require them to send in a paint sample now and we approve it. Is there a timeframe that they have to adhere to for painting these buildings and then painting the. Uh, service yards also, since they've already said that that's not a project they're going to pursue for now? Or would they come back when they're ready to do the service yards and the balconies and whatever and get a second review from us?
Hey, um, well, the the nice thing about that photo we saw, the little patio area, is there's a service yard right next to it. So you see all the colors together. If the board feels that the current service yard color is compatible with the other ones. Then we could easily allow them to keep the service yard as is. Be because I'd like to see the roofs changed too, uh, but that's not in their budget now, and that's not what they're asking for. So.
Yeah, and that's not in their presentation either.
Yeah, yeah, it's not in their presentation. Yeah, yeah, it's not in their presentation. But, so what they're asking us is the, basically the body colors, and, but what we're asking in return is that you change the shutter color, give us another option on the shutter. It could be, I think, the darker tone. We'll all go out, I would encourage everyone to go, let's get directions to where this is, and everybody go look at it before the next meeting and see it in person, because it makes a world of difference. And then we discuss the, if someone comes back and says, oh, my gosh, no, the service yards are totally inappropriate, these colors, or, yeah, the service yards could be okay for six months or a year, whatever their next budget cycle is, we'll have that discussion next time.
That's what I think I'll show.
Yeah, yeah, so...
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, if I could add to the discussion as maybe a point for the applicant, if he's changing the color of the service yard, that will trigger another DRB review. So it would, he may want to advise, present a color for the, for the service yard in advance of him funding the project, and it's good, a DRB is good for a year and can be extended. A DRB approval is good for a year but can be extended, and if, my point is if he had that color lined up, he would not have to come back to you all. The same with the roof, the same with the roof. I know that's, I know that's pushing the boundaries of the, or the scope of the project, but it also would prevent him from coming back to you all again, because...
I prefer that. I would prefer that, so that we can see what everything's going to look like. And I think, I think everybody, anybody not, I think that's a great idea. Hold on, Debbie, one second. I think that's a great idea. So we would, right now, the active suggestion is to table this, the applicant, come back the next meeting, or whenever you want, you know, if next meeting's convenient, with the three, the three colors for the body, a, what they would like to do on the service yard fences, and all the other things that Ms. Lippert had mentioned, the trim, the metal flashing, just let us know what everything is, and the roof, and then we can approve it all at one full, you know, one fell swoop. So, anybody like to, last chance?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Debbie, one more time. Go ahead, Chris.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Debbie, but let me just add, you all need to be very clear what you need the applicant to bring back to you the second time, just so that you make sure you get what you need to for the approval.
Okay, all right, that's, that sounds fine. And does a table require a, a motion and a vote, or does it just?
A table, a table requires a motion and a vote.
Okay, all right, all right, last chance. Debbie, go ahead.
Okay. I just wanted to say what, what Chris said answered my question. My concern was, we usually do give a time limit, and he's already told us that they're not going to start these courts for another year. But I think as long as, as we've got that in our record, that he's going to paint the buildings for now, and then next year, he'll have an approved color to go ahead and paint his courts, but we're not going to hold him to the timeframe of a year. That was my concern. I'm good with that.
Okay. You know, and if the year, if the year runs out, I mean, if the year runs out, we can always renew it, Chris said.
Yeah, yes, sir. That's, yes.
Oh, that's fine. Okay. Annette, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. So the motion for this project, let me get the DRB number, which is DRB 001283-2020. The motion is to table the project until the next DRB or whichever DRB meeting the applicant will be able to provide the additional information. The additional information that's being requested is a revised shutter color, detailed, a color for the service yard and balcony railings, a proposed color for the roof replacements of those couple of roofs that are different, detailed information about gutter color, downspout color, soffit and fascia color, metal roof over the back door color, with the recommendation that the shutter colors be a darker shade of each building color, with the key being not such a high contrast. I think that covers the request of the additional information that the board, oh, and the information of where exactly those paint swatches are located for us to be able to review.
Fantastic. That sounded pretty good. Do we have a, anything to add, or a second?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Lippert and a second by Ms. Foss during the roll. Please vote yes or no. Teresa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Lippert?
Yeah.
Ms. Foss?
Yes.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Ms. Remke?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
I think you're muted, John.
Yes.
Thank you. And Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Ms. Foss, would you?
I have a question. If the client could get us passes to Seapines, who doesn't live in there, to go see the pool yard when we get there?
Absolutely. I'd be happy to. And to answer the location...
Everybody's name, Jim.
Thank you. And to answer the location, that is, it's, it's the second schooner development, so it's not the first entrance into the parking area, but the second, and the swatches are on the common wall inside the parking area, and the address there is 150 Lighthouse Road. And if I may just say, thank you. I think really, we landed in a really terrific place. I'm a very objective and really thoughtful and take in people's consideration of your expertise, and I really, really agree that the roofs need to match, and I think that was a great call on the shutters, being a darker color of the individual villa, and we'll certainly get, get our act together with regards to the balcony and the storage area. And I can't stand those metal roofs over the back doors. Some people have them, some people don't, so, you know, maybe it's a good chance to get rid of them all. But anyway, thank you all for, for great, great information and great feedback. This is a very talented group of people that have, I've just sat here through two and a half hours worth of dialogue around various projects, and it was fascinating to see where you guys landed, and I think you landed in really great places on all the topics. So thank you.
Thank you. One last parting thought. When, when the mock-up is ready, let Chris know, and he'll get the information to everybody on the board. So, along with, with, you know, even if there's a little more specific directions, like turn right, turn left, I'll get, I know I'll get lost, but, but just make contact with Chris, please. And thanks, thanks for your time, and you may go about your day. Thanks for...
Great. My pleasure. Everyone have a nice weekend. Bye-bye.
Okay, let's see. Now we're on the signage. Next, yep, okay, I got it in order. Next item, Ocean Oaks, DRB 001196-2020, and I believe Shay's taking over.
Town? Hi, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Shay Farrar, landscape associate with the town. Ocean Oaks is located at 41 South Forest Beach Drive. This application is for the modification of the existing sign that is located along South Forest Beach Drive. The proposed changes requested by the applicant include repainting the background of the sign to Sherwin-Williams 7047 Porpoise, a darker color that matches the color of the parking garage areas of the building. The application is also requesting to repaint the logo Sherwin-Williams 9149 Inky Blue to approximate the corporate logo. Currently, the sign design includes only two colors. Changing the background color of the sign to a darker color that matches the building will help improve the visibility of the text. However, staff feels that the introduction of a third color in the logo that is not related to the existing building colors is not as desirable as the existing design, so staff is recommending approval with the condition that the logo color do not change. This is the location, along South Forest Beach Drive, here to the north and the beach to the south on the photo. This is a picture of the existing sign, and as proposed. But please note that there's no change planned for the color of the text. This just shows an increased contrast. And that's all that I have.
I mute myself. Thank you very much. Okay. Let's see. Sorry, I got my sheets out of order here. Okay, is the applicant present? And if so, please state your name and your company.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I am present. My name is Pamela Woods, and the company is Hilton Head Signs. Do you want my video on or off?
You're fine the way you are, unless... Would you, I'm sorry, would you like to add anything to the staff's presentation?
No, I mean Shay made, you know, we, we felt that, that the blue color for the logo is tied to their, their corporate color, and if they had the opportunity to display that, that would be great. Obviously, we're advocating for it. But I can't say that, that we have any strong arguments beyond that, you know, based on your opinion and recommendation.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, and please stay tuned. May have questions for you along the way. Teresa, would you like to go through the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Molesky?
Yes, I mean, if the only change is just adding that blue, I don't see anything objectional about it. I think it looks great, and you would have my approval. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Foss?
I really like the darker background color. It does go with the building better, and I actually like the blue logo. If it were the light, white, whiter color, it would really stand out. Now, if you look at the existing sign, it stands out a lot, but now with a darker background, that logo would really punch. So I, I like the blue color. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McAllister?
Yeah, I agree with what's just been said. I think it looks fine. Looks nice, and I'm, I'm on board with the blue.
Thank you. Ms. Remke?
I approved the new colors. I think they look great. Thank you.
Ms. Lippert?
In, in driving by there, initially, I was going to say that I liked keeping the, the two-tone, but in, in hearing the rest of the board, I agree that because of the darker background, I think the blue will actually make it not pop as much, so I think it will be all right.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
I'm fine either way, and I'll go with the board majority on this and say as submitted would be fine with me. I will ask if anyone has a second round on this one. Probably not. Raise your hand. All right, I'm just going to leave it open, who, if someone would like to make a motion. John, you want to do one?
Did I miss anything there?
Now, glad you're paying attention, so. Now, I'm asking if you would like to make a motion. Everybody seems pretty much on board with as submitted, but...
Yep, I just wanted to shut off the mute button on there. So, so let's see, we're looking at Ocean Oaks, DRB number 001288-2020, motion to approve as submitted.
Thank you. Do we, we have a motion by Mr. Molesky. Do we have a second from someone?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Remke. And if you would, when roll call is made, or excuse me, any additional discussion? Okay. When roll call is made, please vote yes or no. Ms. Teresa?
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Ms. Foss?
Yes.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Ms. Remke?
Yes.
Ms. Lippert?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Pamela, and you may log off at your convenience. Thank you.
Pamela, if you wouldn't mind sticking around for the next project?
Oh, wait, sorry, I didn't see that. No, stay here. Didn't look that far ahead, unless somebody's watching. Okay, so we have another sign. Here we go. This one is MBVIP, DRB 0012889-2020. I'll turn it over to Shay.
Sorry, excuse me, let me catch up. Okay. MDVIP is located at 8 Lafayette Drive, which is also the location of Keller Williams Realty. The parcel is identific, is identified in red here, and William Hilton Parkway runs diagonally along the top of the photograph, Lafayette along the bottom. The applicant is requesting the addition of two tenant panels to existing freestanding signs on the site. One is located on Lafayette, and the other is on William Hilton Parkway. The applicant is requesting that the background color of the new panels be painted to match the color of the sign's structure, which is an off-white. The logo would be Sherwin-Williams 7029 Determined Orange, with the remainder of the copy being Sherwin-Williams 7034 Status Bronze. Staff is recommending approval with conditions that the proposed color for MD not be approved, and that the text be one color. The color approved for all the copy would be Sherwin-Williams 7034 Status Bronze.
All right. Thank you very much, Shay. Oh, sorry.
No, that's all, that's all.
Sorry, Shay. Okay. All right, so, sorry to try to get rid of you earlier, Pamela.
That's all right.
Anything to this one?
Well, you know, I think it's a slightly complicated one, because obviously, like, Keller Williams has their big bright red, and I can't say that, that the MDVIP or the MD being in orange seems to be dissonant with that sign or any communication or also, you know, preferences of the town. But again, it's really up to your discretion. The orange is their corporate color, and so they understand if they can't have the corporate color, but this is obviously their first choice, because this is how people identify them and find them. So... So, I guess that's kind of the, you know, we would be very happy with all of it being in bronze because at least it's differentiated from the Keller Williams enough that someone looking for it can find it. Cause it's, a lot of the stuff in the area does blend in and, and it looks, then it becomes like one sign. Um, so, you know, the orange is the, the first choice. Um, but if not, then, you know, we appreciate the town's recommendation and we're.
Thank you very much. Um, so please, please stick around. I won't try to run you off this time. Uh, see if anybody has any questions while we go through the order. Ms. Teresa, would you like to call roll for comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Lippert?
So for me, it, I actually don't mind the colors as it's submitted at all. For me, it's more of a detailing question because the existing sign is already a panel in a frame and to, and I may be reading this incorrectly. I'm reading it as another panel being attached to the existing panel. And in some of them, and I realize sometimes it's hard to Photoshop this, um, it looks like the green may be remaining as a sort of quasi-border. So I guess what I'm saying is my preference would be that the new panel is flush with the existing Keller Williams panel. And then, and therefore in a way, if you're cutting that off, the fact that it's the same as the stucco color, I think is nice. Um, but I would like to have it not be a tack-on to a, an existing panel.
Do I respond to that now or do I wait?
Uh, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll take that as a, as a question. You can respond.
Oh, yeah, I think it's just the, the difficulty of the Photoshop. If you look very closely at the image on what is the, the far left, that, that is an existing panel that is flushed with the Keller Williams and it all sits inside of that border. You just can't see that it's a separate panel because it's all painted green. So I, if I'm understanding, sorry, there's a plane going over. If I'm understanding what you're saying correctly, it, it would be flush, it would be in line with the panel. There's no, it's all inset into kind of that, there's a cavity that creates that border and it's just a difficult Photoshop job to make that cross.
So the, the background of the new panel would be flush with the background of the Keller Williams green?
Yeah, cause it is now. It's, it's actually, the background is the panel that's there and those letters are cut out and applied. So that's why if you get really close to that far left picture, you can actually see the line of the panel itself and that panel would simply be painted. And then the letters applied. So everything would be on the same plane.
Okay, that was my main thing. Yes, I understand which ones, um, are pushing out. My main thing was that we're not tacking a panel onto a panel. So it sounds like, uh, it's good. We're just painting over the bottom of the existing panel and then adding letters to that newly painted section of the existing panel.
Yeah.
Then I'm good.
Ms. Foss?
Um, I have a, I have an issue with this. Um, I, I know, I went to the sign, I saw how it was constructed. I understand that you're doing, um, just repainting that bottom panel. I get that. What I have a huge problem with is now the amount of space around Keller Williams logo. And it's just so messy. Um, I really wish, since the whole thing has to be looked at, and I know Keller Williams probably has the, or the main tenant and the MDVIP is the secondary, but I'd really rather see both of those panels redone in the same color and then let Keller Williams and MDVIP use their colors and their logos, um, and then get the right amount of space around them. That's my five cents.
Mr. McAllister?
Well, Ms. Foster's got me thinking a little bit. Uh, I'm fine with the sign panel as proposed, um, the, the new sign panel. Ms. Foss does raise a good point. I, you know, there's kind of a lot of colors going on. It'd be desirable if the entire sign phase got freshened up. But I know that's not what we're looking at here. Um, so, uh, bottom line, I'm, I'm fine with the orange. I'm fine with, uh, what's proposed. Um, but I will go on record and say that Ms. Foss makes good points and um, it would be desirable if the, the rest of the sign could kind of be freshened up. It, you know, it looks nice, but it's a little hodgepodge, you know, with the green and now all this other stuff. But I'm, I'm fine with what is proposed.
Thank you. Ms. Remke?
Uh, Ms. Foss does make a good point. I always wondered how Keller Williams got away with that Kelly green color anyway. Uh, but we're not judging their sign. We are judging, uh, the doctor's signage. Is orange a color that's accepted by the town? Cause we've had that discussion about other things, orange in the past.
Are you, you directing that to Shay?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Okay, alright.
I was just confirming that orange is a color that's acceptable to the town. Cause we've had other projects come by in orange that have invoked a long discussion about that color. Is this an acceptable color?
Well, I think that staff felt that there was a, a potential conflict between the red and the orange on the same sign. Um, but this would be to the board's discretion, um, for approval.
Okay. Um, I'm going to prove it as is, although I would love to see Keller Williams get rid of that green. But that's not on this project. So I'll approve the sign.
Um, I did want to also clarify that staff is recommending the, the bronze, uh, for all of the text, if that was in question.
Uh, I'm good with that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Maleski?
Yes, I probably, uh, agree. I mean, short answer is yes, I, I would approve the color, the orange, the, the bronze. And, uh, along the lines of what Mr. McAllister had shared, just as a general comment, maybe for the DRB. Big picture, is there any defined criteria when there are situations like this where there are multiple tenants? And is it the property owner's responsibility? Or is there anything that we could do as the DRB and our town to kind of have some type of consistent, um, you know, placard out front? So when there is a situation with multiple tenants that there is a, you know, an approved, you know, guidelines. So, you know, here we just have two tenants, but what if you had five tenants or something? So everybody's not just going in their own direction to, to make things feel a little more cohesive. And this is more of a question maybe for, um, the town and/or, or Michael, if you happen to, to, to know.
We have the requirement that once you have more than two tenants, that you develop a sign system. Um, in this case, there's the only, only the one additional tenant space. Um, but that is definitely a consideration that we, we take into account for the review.
Well, you know, again, uh, it's great. The background matches the stucco. I think that's awesome. I don't mind a little bit of orange in there just to, you know, to have it differentiate it from the Keller Williams and, and the bronze is, is acceptable. So, thank you for listening.
Mr. Guntman?
Okay. Um, yeah, um, you know, Ms. Foss got me thinking about this and the way I hadn't thought about it. And I agree, in principle, um, but I think we're, it, it might be making a, uh, taking it another step that I don't know that they necessarily have to, since it's a two-tenant sign. Mr. Maleski brought up a great point about, you know, if there's multiple tenants and everybody, this guy wanted a bronze sign, this guy wanted a green sign, this one wants a blue sign. Then that's a problem. I think these two are fine together. It blends enough for me, you know, just glancing at a quick glance. I don't, um, I would not do the orange because as Shay pointed out, it conflicts with the red. I don't think those two go together at all. Um, you know, and it's just kind of like the Keller Williams red was there first. So I would say that gets to stay and I would be in agreement with the staff recommendations on the sign. Okay, anybody need a second round on that? Okay, who, uh, I'll just leave it open if someone would like to make a motion. Anyone? Viewer?
I've, I've kind of got a, a question. Um, you know, the town allows like, what do they call it? Accessory colors? Um, or, when they'll allow, we tend to allow in the design guidelines, you know, splash of something, whether it's a trim.
Or an accent?
An accent, right. Um, and I agree, the orange and the red doesn't, they, I don't think they clash, but I, I don't think, you know, it goes well. But where, I guess what's the line? I mean, I guess it gets really subjective as far as like what's just a, an accent color. You know, cause to me, the orange is, it almost gets lost to me. Um, it would probably pop more with, uh, the bronze color. Um, so it doesn't bother me that much. I'm just curious, other people's thoughts on, um, you know, it being an accent color.
Well, I mean, you've had, you know, I was taking an, an informal tally as, as people are speaking so we don't get deadlocked on anything and we can let people get on with their lives. It, it sounds like the orange was, was, was fine with most people. Might not be the first preference, but it was, it was okay. Personally, I won't vote against this if everyone else prefers the orange. I'll, I'll go with the herd mentality here. Because I, I think it's a, it's a simple solution in a simple submittal that if we overthink it, you know, we can certainly overthink it. But, uh, I, I think it, I think it looks fine and I'd be okay, orange or no orange. So, I'm, I'm open.
Well, I didn't mean to throw a wrench anything, but I'll be happy to make a motion if we're ready. I will make a motion to, for the MDVIP signed tenant panel, DRB 1289-2020, to approve as submitted.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion by Mr. McAllister for approval as submitted. Any further discussion? Okay, may, anyone like to make a second?
A second.
Have a second from Mr. Maleski. So we'll go to a vote when Ms. Teresa calls roll. Would you please answer yes or no?
Ms. Lippert?
Yeah.
Ms. Foss?
No.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Ms. Remke?
Yes.
Mr. Maleski?
Yes.
Mr. Guntman?
Yes. So, motion passes, uh, five to one with Ms. Foss as the lone negative vote. So now I believe, uh, Pamela, you may log out this time, right? Nothing else? No other sheets under here? So, thank you for your time.
Oh, I didn't hear anything of what happened. Cause my connection went bad. So can someone just recap pass with the orange?
You passed as submitted.
Oh. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Everybody. Okay. Thanks. You too. Bye.
Okay, that should, uh, take care of the old business, new business. Do, uh, is there anything else? I got my agenda all messed up here. I got so many papers on here. I think that's it. Is there anything else, Chris?
No, sir, that's it.
All right. All right. And that, I, like I said, I think you set a new standard for first timers. That was, uh, your input was excellent. So, uh, looking forward to, um, next time is, is, um, are we getting another member, Chris?
Yes, sir. Next time, um, we should be, um, what am I trying to say? Swearing in, thank you. Swearing in Judd Carstens with Whitmer Jones-Kiefer. He's a landscape architect.
All right, thanks. Few, at least a few.
Welcome, Annette. Yeah. Thank you.
All right, so we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.